Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Before we rise for Pledge of Allegiance, I would like a motion to let trustee O'Reilly to attend remotely.
They'll move to second.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee Tinochi. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Welcome to the meeting. All rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution, when they change from their guide on into the protocol with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're getting close to Thanksgiving, and I guess I'll start by saying Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, so we don't forget when the meeting ends. Although, the weather is just not the same as it's been. It's turning into normal weather, right? And I guess it has to be. You know, but anyways, welcome, for those that are here and online. I don't believe, and I will ask, is anyone here from the HOA that I live in, the Union Creek? Anybody online or in person? I don't believe so. I don't believe that Tom was able to attend tonight. So then the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comments tonight, online or in the room? Wow, that's really quiet tonight. I know we have Deputy Kenner here, so I don't, he's not prepared to do a police report, but is there, does anyone under the public safety reports have anything that they want to ask or any concerns? All right, I'll keep us moving. The consent agenda, we have three items on it. I will, the approval of the October 2024 Treasuries Report, approval of the board meeting minutes from the last meeting, November 12th. There is a revision that's been sent out to everyone. There was some stuff a little garbled up, and it's been corrected. I don't know if everyone had the opportunity to look at it. It's pretty non-sustantative revisions. And then, a resolution ratifying and approving certain change orders regarding the Village Hall expansion project.
Can I ask a question? Maybe I missed a moving on that. What drove the need for the change from ComEd on the Village Hall?
The ComEd service line is, normally when you do a new service connection, they will install it for free. But since we had an existing service connection, they no longer provide that service.
Oh, so it was a misassumption.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I move, we approve the consent agenda with the changed minutes.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer.
Could I ask one question about seven? Rather than pulling it off, would we need to do this ComEd hookup if we were not doing the, I forget what we call it, the emergency place in the basement?
You would have to do it no matter what.
Say, say, I didn't hear you.
We would have to do it no matter what.
And so, why wasn't it in the original bid?
Because world head factors, in their past experience, the new ComEd connections have been covered by ComEd, because it's like a new service being set up, but we have an existing service, and they don't then do a complimentary, you know, routing of the power lines. So it was a misassumption.
Got about half of that. Okay.
I can call you and explain it, too.
Okay, so that was moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tinochi.
Aye.
And President Jacob.
I don't think I have to vote, so motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so we have Village Planner Karen Stone here tonight, and you are up on the agenda to give us a Village Planner's Report.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
And thanks for being here in person, too.
Good to be here, yeah. Yeah, I love coming out. We've got, I've got two things, but I think the first one is the QuickTrip South 15 PUD project, and just as, everybody's probably very familiar with it by now, but just as a reminder, there's.
Can you guess a reminder?
Oh, can you talk me through that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just as a reminder, QuickTrip is seeking a rezoning of the South 15 property from R2 Residential to HR1 Highway Retail PUD. They're seeking a text amendment to allow fueling stations in HR1, which right now doesn't really have very many uses. They pretty much are dependent on the PUD. They would like to get approval of a preliminary PUD for the entire 14.88 acres, a final PUD for Phase 1, which is the fueling station, convenience store, detention pond, and it would also extend infrastructure to the larger 15-acre parcel, parcels, and a final subdivision plat. So basically, five things. The project is still in the public hearing phase. There have been two public hearing meetings held. One was on September 3rd, and I think we had about a dozen people attend, it was in this room, for that one. A dozen people spoke, or more than that probably that attended. And it was continued to allow some additions to, some corrections, some amendments, and some additional information requested by the Plan Commission, CBA. Ended up continuing to November 19th, where we had, by my count, about 150 people, maybe a little bit more than that. And about 30 people stood up and spoke at that meeting. We also have received, I have not counted the incoming emails, public comment and evidentiary comment emails, I've received, I would say probably around 40 or 50 at this point, and they're still trickling in. The Plan Commission was not able to spend time deliberating that they need to do after all of the public input, it was close to 10 o'clock, and they have decided to, you know, they've decided to continue the public hearing. We don't know exactly when, probably a day in January, and it will need to be re-advertised, we'll do the mailing again, to properties within 250 feet or a little bit beyond that. And again, it will be published in the newspaper. So that's where it stands right now, it's just kind of a status update, but we'll see if the PCZBA at their next meeting, you know, will determine some conditions to mitigate some of the potential impacts that, and issues that have been raised in connection with the project. And they will go through the standards for PUDs and delivering, see what they come up with.
I have a question. I was there. Procedurally, since the PCZBA basically closed the, you know, open public comment, is that then a done deal? They won't reopen that procedurally?
They're planning, they're planning to kind of pick up where they left off and not reopen it to public comment, although.
There may be a need to have a limited re-opener.
Okay.
Because the PCZBA did ask for some additional information, so to the extent new information does come in before that hearing date, we do have to offer the public an opportunity to address those points, but it won't be a, from the beginning of time.
That kind of addresses my question, I was just, procedurally, how, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question, and that is, who is in possession of all of the email and comments from the public?
They're in the Plan Commission Google Drive that was sent out with the.
Okay, are the policymakers gonna get access to reading those?
Yes, they were sent to the trustees in an email with the PCZBA agenda. I can resend it to you if you'd like.
I'd appreciate it.
No problem. Trustee O'Reilly, anything else?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you. Magnalina, Commissioner DeWort, do you have anything for us, or?
No.
Thanks, all right. Thanks for being here. Anything else from your report?
Unless there's any questions.
All right, we'll just keep ourselves moving. Number nine, discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning code regarding special venues in the B1 Historic Business District, Brothers Field. I'm gonna set this up. Karen, are you gonna do that? Thank you.
This project has got way more history in town than I do, but it's come, it's come a long way just recently, you know, five months since I've been here. And again, they are seeking a text amendment to the B1 district to allow for a special events venue as a special use in B1, and also a major amendment to the Red Oaks PUD, of which Brothers Field covers three of the seven lots in that PUD, to permit a special events venue, and also to recognize and incorporate changes to buildings and to infrastructure and extension of infrastructure to allow for this special events venue. They, the applicants have really done a lot of work to adjust their plans and add detail, and I think the latest iteration that was approved by PCZBA really prioritizes some of the infrastructure and facilities that the village finds important. And I'll just add that, I think one of the most exciting parts to me as a planner who specializes in downtown areas, is the partnership with the Historic Downtown Long Grove Business Association, because they've been really closely involved in, you know, giving feedback, and they really want to make it a venue, a facility that helps build downtown business and, you know, very closely involved business associations. So I think that's great thing. And, yeah, they're gonna go into some detail about the project itself.
So is the next thing a presentation, is that what you're thinking?
Dan, do you want to go through the presentation, or do you?
My name is Dan Shapiro, I'm the attorney representing the applicant, and thank you for having us tonight. I have a presentation, I'm happy to go through it. My sense is that you're very well aware of the plans. I'm also available to answer any questions, whatever you prefer. And before that, I just want to say, over the last five or six months that we've been dealing with staff, it's been a true pleasure in collaborating with you, with Chris, to bring this to this point, and we truly appreciate that. So it's your pleasure, I can go through, maybe it does prove so, slides that we have on a PowerPoint, or I'm available to answer any questions.
Would you all like to see the presentation?
Sure.
Okay.
There's one that said no.
Well, I assume that we've read the material, so, you know, is something you want to highlight in that, or if Rita wants to see it?
If you don't want to see the presentation, totally fine, I won't take offense, but there are a couple, two things I just would like to address if I may, before you talk about this. Late last week, we got the proposed text limit and the proposed ordinance, and I know that we worked very hard on with staff. Everything was good. We don't have any concerns or issues with anything, except for one or two items, which I'd like to address. One was the limit on the number of outdoor public venue events, I believe it's.
Ten.
On page nine, it's ten, it was moved to ten. During one of our hearings, although that was part of maybe the original application, we expressed some desire to have that unlimited. Why? Because the Historic Downtown Long Grove Association had also of that name, so please excuse me. And Jesse, as well as this board, always coordinate events anyway, in terms of a master schedule, and then we have other things in this ordinance that really restricts the outdoor event, number of people, et cetera. So we don't want to be confined to ten, because it's kind of self-confining anyway, given the scheduling that would be part of the coordination. So we've asked for some relief on that. The other thing, and it's not as important to us, but that's, page 11 at the very top, and that comes from section seven on page 10, so it rolls over from 10 to 11. Other substitute outdoor special events, you will see in that section, there is a 60-day notice period, in the event there's a substitute event or a last-minute change. We'd ask for 30 days, just because sometimes we don't have the luxury of providing 60 days, and we asked for 30 days originally, and it came out 60 days, but I would like to reiterate that request if I may. So those are two things. Aside from that, we are very happy to have this come before you. We're very excited, we're ready to go with moving forward with this, and we truly appreciate all the attention that you're giving to this.
I might just give you a little further background. As to the number of events, that was simply drawn from the original application. I believe that the procedures we have in the ordinance itself gives the board plenty of discretion as to the liberality or not of special events, and that's really going to be based on track record. So I don't, I don't see from a legal perspective any great need to abide by the 10 event limit. As to the 30 versus 60 days, that's really more a matter of processing, and, you know, I think that we've probably seen in the past that when there's a pinch, staff and the board have been able to turn that around in a very short period of time, so that's a policy question for you as to how much time, but I don't think from a legal perspective it matters, it's really a matter of implementation.
Rita, is there something, I know I spoke, do you want to do the presentation, or?
Well, I didn't attend any of the commission meetings, I read the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, I've got some questions, but I'm interested in, I'm interested in what we have.
Your question.
You want me to share the presentation? We'll have to go. Yeah. Can I ask a procedural question, too? We have, to Vic, we have number nine, and we have number 10. How do those fit together, right?
Number nine is the text amendment, and it creates the opportunity for them to have this use. So that has to be approved first, to have a basis on which to grant the special use permit, which is the request in chief.
Okay, got it, so that's the.
Number nine puts it on the menu, and then number 10 said, with this.
Yes, correct.
Right, so we decide them separately, but they're related.
Right.
Okay, got it. I'll share the presentation, and then, I don't think we have to go through every slide. Share.
So I'll be brief, but hopefully explain, so. So this came to light, as you know, during COVID, and you were very generous with Jesse to allow for outdoor events, which really was a welcome relief during COVID. As I explained before the PCZBA, the nice thing about this is that you see his track record. So for the number of events, and the way he's been using this property over three or four years, I'd like to think it's been successful without incident in a real addition to the community. So it started from COVID days, we were very generous in allowing him to continue it through this point, and it's been a, really, a point where people come together and part the community. So there's the next slide.
Yep.
So we've built on that, in our programs, we've been hosting things, no complaints, no problems, no traffic complaints. There is a, maybe a sound complaint or two over four years, I'm not even sure if it was related to what he was doing, but I would call that maybe a benign, unrelated sound complaint.
Can I ask a question? Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear?
I can.
You can, okay, good, just making sure.
Barely.
Thank you. Barely. You may want to.
Is there a camera sample?
Yeah, you can, you can pick it up and use it as a microphone if you want, so. Someday we'll get a real sound.
I'll keep it for a minute here. Mr. Shapiro, are, if, I've read all of this.
Yes.
Is your presentation the same as what I've read, or?
Yes, this PowerPoint, if it's part of your package, it's the same thing.
That's what, okay.
Yeah, so I'm happy to repeat it, or not?
I've read it all.
Okay, then.
But is there a difference?
I have a couple of questions, a couple things seem odd to me.
I do, I do, too.
Can we just ask questions?
Sure.
All right, so you want me to stop sharing? Is there a diagram or anything you want me to show, or no, or?
The colorful slide, keep going down.
After that, maybe two slides ahead.
One more.
Eight more.
That's the colorful phasing plan, yeah.
Okay, I don't know, do we want to leave this up, or just? No?
Makes no difference, that's fine. I printed that bit, so.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna stop presenting.
Okay, all right.
So go ahead, I think you were first, Rita.
Any questions?
With questions, yeah, you were.
I've got a bunch, and again.
You're limited to three minutes?
Again, the commission meetings, and they're just from different sections of the tone that I read. The, I guess I'd like to understand the use of the word "major," Karen, I think you used it, was it the major amendment?
That's a technical term under our zoning code. I mean, it's, we have a limited category of things that are minor, everything else is major.
I got it. I got it, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And I'll just go through the questions. Oh, I got that one, all right, I've got that one already. Got this one. Live music. So as I understand it, the live music can't go past 10, and I, and now I'm forgetting exactly what days of the week, it's allowed up till 6, I think, on other days, is that correct?
I think the hours are in the ordinance, and I can't, I can't.
It was Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Till 10.
No.
So Friday and Saturday are later.
Are later, yeah.
And it's a lot of amplified music. So there was a lot of the questions, you may know, at the PCZBA, of, well, if it's live music and coming into the hardware, that's fine, but if it's amplified through the speaker system, that's different.
Yes.
So that's where that language kind of came from, and I think that was the intent, perhaps, of this ordinance.
Well, the amplified is okay on Friday, Saturday, is that exactly correct?
Friday and Saturday up to those later hours?
It's on, it's on our page, it's our page 43, is that for 10 on Friday, Saturday, or eight on Sunday and the evening? Okay, okay, so.
Okay.
But that's music, I don't think that's amplified. No, that's the wide amplified, that's the wide amplified. So the only, the only question I have, and really, I'm concerned that may or may not be able to be answered. I, I think that this is a good idea, and I, and I think it's gonna be a boon to the downtown. I do just have a couple concerns regarding, we frequently get complaints from the people who lived here before, you know, festivals and so on and so forth, regarding the music, you know, it carries and blah, blah, blah. And I'm wondering, in addition to those residents, I'm wondering if someone who wants to open a business in the downtown area would think it was great to have that in the background, or would it, would they shy away because they want to have something that has its own atmosphere, its own mood? I don't know if it needs to be addressed during.
I can't, it's necessarily, really, because it's, you know, kind of predicting the future, but what we do know from the public hearings, and we do know from the past, is there was testimony at the PCZBA that Brothers Field has actually attracted other businesses and more foot, pedestrian traffic, and more activity to the downtown, and because of that, there's been a greater sense of, called excitement, community, because of that. That was the testimony. As to a future business, I can't speak to that, but I do know that there was something along those lines from the testimony.
What I'm thinking is, if I'm at Enzo and Lucias and on outside, maybe I don't want to hear head banging music, if that's what's going on, maybe I don't want to hear, you know, blah, blah, blah. What businesses do you know were, came into the village because of Brothers Field?
Do you know who was kind of attracted, if I'm in, you might know from.
Well, I mean, the testimony from businesses, obviously, they enjoy when we have activities because we bring more foot traffic, and most people tend to radiate throughout downtown. So it's kind of.
I can't name any, but there were. There was testimony at Braxwell in summer, before the PCZBA, that this was good for the downtown.
I see, so there's, we don't know that there's a business or two or three that's here because of.
There were specific business folks, which I, I do not recall, but there was testimony of.
Okay, there's another section in the literature, in the presentation, that there's a limit on event capacity, and HCLGVA and the village manager would referee, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the village managers would referee.
The limit, I believe, is 250 people, and the, as I understand it, that limit, it comes from the capacity of the number of people for both the 360 bar and the pavilion. So the 360 bar had a capacity of 40, or thereabouts, and the pavilion 200, so it was kind of rounded in a nice way to 250.
I didn't see it as a limit, Rita, I read it as that was part of the definition of an outdoor special event, that that, those were limited.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't a, that wasn't a hard limit, that was not a hard limit.
An outdoor special event is something that would attract something like 250.
That's one of the.
Not a hard limit, rather, if it hits that, then there's a process there.
Yeah, it's a trigger.
Thanks, I don't have any. I got that one. Is this zoning change run with the land?
Special use permit? Yes.
For the, for the length of time that Brothers Field occupies it, or?
If they, if they terminate the use, then it terminates.
Okay, that's right.
Right.
What if the property's sold?
But if, if they were to sell it to, you know, to somebody else, if George wants to take it over. They could sell that, it would still be there. We have provisions regarding transferies, that they have to accept the responsibilities of the ordinance. But it is transferable.
Okay, that's, that's just a question I had. And, yeah, we say in subsequent phases after the first, that the plans are to be submitted by December 31st of the year before the next phase that they're supposed to begin. What happens in?
We actually say that each of the phases has a time when everything has to be completed, so we don't have a particular time when it has to be submitted. But the consequences for failing to meet one of the phased deadlines are several, but it truly might be up to the village board, I mean, we actually even terminate the special use permit at that point. But, you know, I would expect that we would, we would see some kind of conversation with the owners, their on track, or how to get them on track. We have the ability also to find them, that's a, because if we violate some of our zoning code, there'd be a fine that would ensue.
Thank you. Can I ask a question related to that? What's the public interest in how to meet deadlines?
Well, I think when this first came to the board, I want to say this would have been in 2023, one of the concerns of the board was that, okay, this is makeshift, and we want it to be more permanent in its. And we want it to be more permanent in its, uh, in its development style. I think really the first three phases are the ones that are most critical. Those are the three that will, at the end of those three phases, transform the most makeshift elements into permanency ones. That's the tiki bar and the, what is currently attached. Well, I guess it's down now, but, you know, so at that point, we'll have an outdoor pavilion, which will be a structure. Have a, uh, an outdoor bar, which again will be a structure. The last phase, I think that's the, that's the tan building, right?
I think you mentioned two and three. Number one is the red building.
One is the red building, yeah.
Yeah, that number one.
Number three are the...
Two, and the three sixty bar is three. And the tan bar is four.
Yeah. So the tan bar is frankly probably the least significant for purposes of having the timing, but it was part of the presentation. And so since that's the package that was presented, that's incorporated into the phasing.
Okay. Yeah, I think my last question is, I don't understand why the Architectural Commission is in charge of the landscaping. Or has, has purview over it? It's like, no offense, but they're not arborists.
Where was that?
Uh, no, it's in the ordinance. It was more a matter of...
Yeah, just they have to get their...
Somebody has to do it.
Why wouldn't it be, you know, the...
You're welcome to it.
No, no. We, we have, we have botanists and arborists that are with the scenic corridor committee or commission. Why wouldn't they, I mean, I don't anticipate that it's gonna be, you know, I don't think they're gonna be planting down. But I'm just wondering why the Architectural Commission is, they have the, the authority over approving or not approving their landscaping.
I guess I would...
Looks like you're in some...
Well, it's, um, we do have our landscape architects, you know, review it and make recommendations and things like that. But it's in their, their duties under the code, um, is to review landscaping, lighting, and, you know, and architecture. I can't, I don't know the section off the top of my head.
No, 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 I understand. It was, it's just a question, you know?
And this, you know, keep in mind, the landscaping for this development is not like a scenic corridor.
Right.
It's really more, how does it enhance the overall design of the space? So I think that the Architectural Commission, while we may not have the exact perfect commission to do everything, I think the Architectural Commission probably has enough portfolio to handle it.
Just a question. Okay, did you fill that? Okay, thanks. I'm finished.
Speaker Chris Meyer?
Sure. Um, I just want to say, I am super excited to see this here. I think it's gonna, I think what they've done even, you know, temporarily has done a real boon. And I would really like to see the downtown continue to grow as, I'll call it, an experience center. Now, we have Sunset, it's kind of more of a retail area, and this is an experience center. And so I'm really pleased to see that. And I'm, thank you for going through the process with this and the investment in making it, you know, just as deliberate and intentional as, you know, anything else that goes in there. So I appreciate that. I thought some things were odd, and I think maybe one of them might have been answered to Rita's question, why this thousand feet from another special event venue in the text amendment?
Oh, I'll tell you why.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, that was my doing. The reason is that this is an own quantity. And if one maps from this location elsewhere along Old Henry Road and in the B, uh, in the B1 district...
Yes.
There's not another spot that it could be.
What if somebody want to do some of the fire station?
Then we have them come in for text amendment. And we can say, unless otherwise provided by the village board or something like that. But I think that having the board be able to exercise a legislative decision is gonna be important to keep control of it. And so that's why.
Okay, all right. So that was one oddness. Another, I thought the ten out...
I won't take that personally.
It did have a few of your fingerprints on it. I've seen those before. I thought the ten, the limit of ten outdoor special events was odd also. I'm not sure that that would be in interest because we do have other things in there. Do you ever plan to have private events, like a wedding?
Um, we've, we've have had them. We don't like turn away, but...
I mean, just like the two hundred and fifty thing, it seemed like that would trip you, a wedding would trip you into that. And I, like, this just, you know, I think we have an interest in making sure it's not a circus seven days a week. I think you do too, but we have an interest in that publicly. Um, but also I don't really want to have to have either this board or that. Staff has to look at every single thing. So I don't, I don't know how to, how to deal with that.
Can we ask another question? Just if you got what you wanted, how many events would you want?
Well, I think part of it was, like, I'm sorry.
Hey, Jesse, you want to come up a little closer? Sorry to make you do that. Thank you.
Microphone.
Yeah, so Bobby can hear, yeah.
Our concern has always just been flexibility because, you know, as we were kind of founded, it's what is the, what is the need right now? Some of the events that we're talking about might be like candle making events where it's really just not a big deal, but it may attract, I don't know, attract a lot of people. So just really, we're looking for that flexibility, not be held into it. Some of the larger events, you know, they do help to pay the bills. Some of the smaller community ones, like, we break even on those. We're pretty happy with them. So being able to balance that as needed is big. But again, for us, where the town is our, is our focus, you know, it always kind of has been. We want to continue to grow with everybody. And we're excited to finally, you know, move forward and get the indoor restaurants and stuff that we've been talking about for years. So it feels like we're in the right direction. And, yeah, it just, the restrictions, I understand why. You don't want a free-for-all. You know, we're just looking for that flexibility of like being able to pivot when we need it.
Yeah, and what, as I read it, I'm like, you know, I actually don't want to see a limit of ten. That just seemed a little constricting. And that, then they'd be in here every other week looking for a deviation from it. And I don't, I don't think that's a good use of our time.
Was there defined a minor and major event or...
No, again, the reason why we put the ten in there at all was because of the application.
I see.
Yeah, and I think that because they're gonna be, the way we set this up in terms of approving the special, they're gonna have a calendar. They're gonna have to come in before you with a calendar.
Right.
And then they'll tell you how many events are gonna be. And you might say, holy cry, that's too many. Or you might say, that's fine, and just approve it. So that's gonna be a decision for the board in each instance. And, you know, with the opportunity to make some adjustments, which was the other provision that Dan mentioned, you know, I think that that affords the flexibility that Jesse's asking for without committing to any particular number.
That's kind of, yeah, if we don't commit to a number, but we commit to the, we'd like to see a calendar in March, you know, and then we'll chat. And then it's a chat, not several chats.
The reason why we have the procedure was because that seemed like the logical thing. The reason why the ten was in there is because of the application.
Gotcha. And my last question is, the public restrooms, how will that work? Again, I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where we shifted from where I had just addressed this board, was the restrooms was kind of later. Now, the reason we're doing them in that front building, eighteen eighty-five will be the name you'll hear going around because that's when we confirmed it.
That's the red one?
Yeah, that's when we confirmed it was built by eighteen eighty-five. So we're good to go with that. And there'll be an entrance in the back, the plan show we've got a ramp, eighty day access. So you'll be able to go through the back from Brothers Field. And then the bathrooms are right there, goes from the inside. So we're built to add access to them. And then we have the restroom support potty to add needed for the larger events. And those are kind of laid out on the plan as well.
And when, I mean, there's public restrooms that get visited once a week, and then there's those that get visited once every ten minutes. You know, I don't know how...
We're planning, we're planning for the every like ten minutes. You know, we hope to, we don't want to do it and just kind of be worried about the toilets clogging, which we see a lot of our neighbors going through. Every week, we see them out there. So we're planning to do it right. The, you know, should have a pretty decent sized facility for people to use and hopefully to handle it.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Trustee O'Reilly, do you have questions?
Not a, not a question. I just wanted to say that although I didn't read each and every word in this document, I've read most of them. And I applaud all of you folks who worked with the minutia of this, this project. And, and also to thank Jesse and, and Vic and the Plan Commission and all the people who have been so patient in getting this put together. It would have been a shame had it not worked, but it's, I applaud everyone for seeing it work. I'm also glad to see that you're working on the bathroom deficit that we have in downtown. So hats off.
Thank you. Trustee Tanucci?
After reading everything and listening to your discussion tonight, I have no further questions.
Okay, so, so just hold one second. So there was two things that Attorney Shapiro brought up, the thirty days and the ten events, right? So do we need to, is there any recommendation by Vic?
From legal, I don't have a concern about either of the requests. The thirty days, I think, is a little more, we've talked about the ten events, but the thirty is really more of an implementation and processing issue.
You split the difference into forty-five?
How would you feel if it was thirty?
I'm good with thirty. If he's already gotten the downtown approvals and everything?
I think what I'd like to, you know, just not in the bake into that, but just like, kind of be really clear about the, like, let's do the March conversation.
And that was, the way the calendar works now, so our calendar is done for next year. We turn that into the Historic Downtown Long Grove Business Association. They match it with their events because we all try to make sure we're not duplicating where we shouldn't. And then I believe they submit that to this board as well. Our special firms come in, but they'll submit that calendar. It goes to their events first.
Well, maybe wait for them to submit yours.
Well, we can send you ahead. The thirty days, so it wouldn't be a habit, right? We have our calendar, basically, we've now got our established events. So ninety-nine percent of what's gonna happen is already, those dates are already decided. Thirty days would be if something does change. Every now and then we do get a bribe that's in panic because something got double booked and she needs a venue or something that weekend. So it would be an off case, it would not be unnatural to put them in a situation where they gotta prove something in thirty days. It wouldn't be a habit.
I think too, we've, we've been pretty cooperative with emergencies or gee, can we do this or that? And, you know, kind of good news, bad news, if you have a panicky bribe, there you are, right? You know, that's not all bad.
So would everyone be comfortable taking the number of events out of it? Leaving it out and then changing it to thirty days?
Yes.
It's still, we gotta approve them, right? We still, we still have an approval clause. So if they say they want to do fifty-five, um, and Jesse's like, no way.
After laughing, you can tell them no.
Yeah, so we still have control of it.
The problem with taking it out unlimited feels very unlimited. I define with a big number, something, some kind of a number. And again, we can always work around it.
Uh, that's up to you if you feel like the number is necessary. Again, honestly, I prepared this thinking that the ten limit was a little bit overreaching and figuring that we better off, we are better off having a procedure to allow the board in cooperation with the Brothers Field people to come up with a number that is appropriate. Keep in mind, there's also one other filter on that, and that's the HCLGVA. I think I got it right too at that time.
You did.
Uh, you know, so you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a, a group of three different, uh, like-minded entities trying to figure out how best to utilize available dates in the downtown. And really, we're talking mostly the, you know, maybe March, but more likely the April to October period.
Well, this could always be amended as well. And/or deviate.
Yeah, yeah.
Just how many times do you want it, do you want it?
You know, give it, give it a year, see what happens, right? You know?
Somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the text amendment in item nine and that we approve the ordinance granting special units in item ten with the changes of thirty days notice and no restriction on large outdoor events.
Okay, so let me, can we, do we need to do the first one first, or can we do them together?
Well, it's a matter of how confident you are.
All right, I move that we consider an ordinance permitting this up to regarding special events in the B1 historic district with the thousands of foot.
I thought what Vic was saying was we, that it was written for a reason.
No, we're doing the text, so text amendment first. So it's the text amendment that sets it all up, so. And Trustee Chris Meyer moved it. Second by Trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
And Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now, the second motion.
Okay, so I will move that we consider that we approve the ordinance granting special use permit in item number ten, subject to changing the notice for any deviation. May move from sixty days to thirty days. And that we remove the restriction of ten on outdoor events because we feel retaining that there will be a calendar that must be provided.
Okay, that was moved by, I'm sorry, that was moved by Trustee Chris Meyer and seconded by...
Second.
By Trustee Tanucci.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor? Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
I'm sorry, can't hear you. Yes, okay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
It wasn't.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Give you applause here. You got it done.
Unlike the bears, you got it to the end.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, so on to more exciting things. Discussion. Happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for being here. Discussion and consideration of resolution for renewal of the employee health, dental, and vision insurance policies submitted by Jay Krug and Associates. Any conversation or any questions?
Sounds good to me.
Want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Trustee O'Connor?
Second.
Second by Trustee Tanucci. Roll call.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
And Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Discussion and consideration of resolution approving an insurance renewal proposal submitted by Stalarick and Company, if I got that right?
Stalarick, yeah.
Stalarick, okay. Any questions?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're just going to say, this is substantially the same as what we have this year. I should back up a little bit. This is property liability, cyber, and workers' comp. Substantially the same as we have this year. The property deductibles are increasing from a thousand to twenty-five hundred, which is typical in the industry right now, deductibles are going up. Also, if you add up the total revenue of all of our properties, that also, you know, property insurance typically does, value of what you're insuring goes up every year because it costs more for materials. And they raise the amount of our coverage to account for that. Other than that, it's basically the same.
Thank you for being the resident SMA, subject matter expert.
But there's another element, right?
There's a open item that I want to discuss with you on adding the historic barn and schoolhouse.
Okay, I forgot about that.
I thought we already had that insured.
It's covered like under our inland marine for like general property, village property.
In full, any of your stuff, yeah. But not actually called out by name.
And the values for those were determined, they were previously insured by the Historical Society through State Farm. So I got the State Farm on what they were insured for. And our insurance broker said they matched their analysis. So that's why the valuations for those properties were what they're listed on there.
You, you can, somebody, what is the value of the...
Priceless.
It earns you, what happens?
That's why I want...
So it would be rebuilt using modern materials. I don't know what materials the buildings are built from, but I'll just give you an example. If you had an old building with plaster walls and it was completely destroyed, it would be rebuilt with high wall walls. If you had some kind of fancy stuff that's basically not available now, it would be rebuilt with current materials.
And what about contents?
Contents is separate. We don't own the contents. We only own the buildings.
So they're not insured?
Not by us. They'd be insured by the Historical Society.
I see.
The owner has a, has a choice to insure.
I see.
In practical terms, what does that do for us?
We'd get a check if it burned down or if it were destroyed for a qualified, under a qualified reason, we would get a check for that amount.
Which is the cost of rebuilding?
That's insured for replacement costs.
It says ninety thousand.
That's for the barn and then two hundred and five thousand for the schoolhouse. And it's six hundred and fifty-seven bucks a year and additional premium to add those two on. But the question is, if we're not going to rebuild it if something happens, is?
Well, yeah, that crossed my mind, too. If we've already decided we're not rebuilding it, then why are we insuring it?
That was my question on the practical.
So what if, what if it's partially damaged?
Well, like right now with the door getting damaged.
Yes.
That's going to cost us thirteen hundred dollars to replace, hopefully tomorrow. And our deductible is twenty-five hundred, so we wouldn't want to spend that. And it would increase our claim frequency, which would add.
Right.
Talk later on.
Trusty O'Reilly?
I, I, I wish I were there. The, the price of an old building is priceless. You can't put a number on it. It has value that's hidden. And, and so to denigrate it is, is ridiculous because it has value to a lot of people. And so insurability, I would assume we would insure it if for no other reason than if it got damaged, we could repair it. But to replace it, we could never replace it.
Right.
I, I, I'm not sure why you use the word, I certainly, I don't mean to denigrate it. I mean to try to understand.
As I said, I wish I were there, but I'm not. So.
Right, I was speaking strictly in financial terms. So a good point, we had the roof replaced on the school recently. That would be an example where insurance would come in handy. It's not destroyed, the building is not destroyed, but the roof might be. You could use insurance to put a new roof on. Whereas if you did not have insurance, it would cost you a lot more to put on a new roof. So there's some justification for having the insurance.
I mean, am I hearing everyone say that we should do the insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
I'm a big neutral and, you know, if that's, if it's meaningful to everybody.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Include that, please.
And include the insurance in it for the, for the schoolhouse and barn, yeah?
Right. Make a motion to accept the insurance package in item twelve, including insuring school and the barn.
All right, moved by Trusty Tanucci. Second by Trusty O'Connor. Roll. I'm sorry, we, we got you first, Bobby. Sorry about that.
Trusty Tanucci.
Aye.
Trusty O'Connor.
Aye.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Aye.
And Trusty Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Jeff, you're remote, but it's time for the Village Engineers Report.
All right, very good. Thank you. Engineers.
Yeah, before you go, I will tell you, Atticusic's fully open. I drove it.
I know, right? So they got that done pretty, pretty well, right under the wire to get it done in the new construction seasons, that's for sure.
I don't think it was open like a few days ago, so.
No, the, the asphalt plants, you know, typically close at Thanksgiving. They were right there.
Yeah, no, but it wasn't all four planes open because I was just through there last week, so, okay. Anyway, it's just it, right? They haven't opened? When? Since when? Okay, go ahead. Keep, keep going. I'm interrupting. Go ahead.
All right. Just a couple of updates tonight. Village Hall construction is still ongoing. They did get the shingles on the addition part of it and dark outside, but they have removed the shingles and started doing the repair work over the boardroom. So they can't work at night, so you know, guys don't get treated to the sound of hammers tonight. Next is the siding and the shingles, or not the shingles, but the siding, both the existing and then, you know, because of weather, they, they'll take care of the siding painting for the existing in the spring.
When do they move to this room?
Once they finish that.
When do they move to this room?
Yeah, they've got quite a bit of work yet to do on the addition. You know, the mechanicals and things like that are done, but now it's more the detailed work. It's, it's a few months away.
Okay, thank you.
Moving down, let's see, I did have a highlight on number nine, but that is open. That's that, Atticusic Road, the Lake County DOT project. Right above that, Arlington Heights, you know, that one's still ongoing. There was nothing to report there. Just the ongoing that it's difficult to get through there with the traffic. Just kind of jumping down some of the miscellaneous work, Indian Creek Road, that is also open. The closure that Hawthorne Woods did, just west of the municipal boundaries of Long Grove. Just as a report, the Checker Road speed tables and the Oak Road road pylons have been removed for the winter. The covered bridge, the accident that the AT&T truck damaged the steel trim piece, that's been repaired. And as Chris mentioned earlier, initial discussions have been made by village staff on the CIP plan. And I'm hoping that at the next board meeting, there'll be a preliminary road list for discussion at the next board meeting. And other than that, there's a few different updates on various permits and projects. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to, to take them.
I have a question. You may or may not have an answer to it. About ten or fourteen days ago, north of, on Route eighty-three, north of Indian Creek, but south of Endwood Drive. You can kind of picture where that is.
Yep.
Something showed up where there were yellow reflectors by the curb, and there was a countdown, five, four, three, two, one, zero, between the creek and Endwood Drive. What is that all about? By the way, four of those five numbers, five of those six numbers have fallen down, five through zero.
Yeah, Kent, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what that's all about, but let me see if I can't find some info from the state.
I, I think what they're trying to do is warn drivers that they're about to approach Endwood Drive. But I'm not sure what's so special about Endwood Drive that you need a countdown and reflectors to let you know that you're approaching. Just curious, not a big deal.
Yeah, if I, if I hear anything, there's an easy answer, I'll, I'll pass that along.
Okay, thanks.
Trusty O'Reilly, any questions?
No, I don't.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the report.
End of report, yep.
Do we need Jeff to, yeah, we probably need you to stay, so. All right, now it's time for the Village President and Trustee reports. I do have one item. And that is that Jeanette Berger is going to step down from being the Senate Quarter Conservancy Commissioner Chair. She's going to stay on as Commissioner, and then Jeff Burke is going to take over the chair position. This can be done per our village code. They can decide that and make that change. And I just wanted to inform everyone that's happening. They're both really good people. Jeff Burke is, I think it's about two years now. He had to, you know, basically step down for a slight amount, and then we reappointed him. But he's, you know, he's now retired, and this is what he wants to do. So I don't know if there's any concerns, but I just wanted to inform everyone of that. All right, end of my report. Let's see, we'll move right to Trusty Chris Meyer. Trusty O'Connor. Trusty O'Reilly?
No.
Trusty Tanucci?
I'll make my annual request to keep the bridge lit year round.
By the way, I did get to turn the lights on last Friday, so that was fun. There was a lot of people there. It was crowded at the lighting ceremony.
It was really delightful to see the families and the teenagers, as well as the little ones, you know, and, and, and older people as well. It was really, and it was cold, you know, but it was a nice crowd. It was a nice evening.
Ironically, it was actually warm, but we thought it was cold because we were used to the sixty degree weather.
It was warmer last year.
Like tonight, you know, but, yeah, it was, it was, it was cute. And I, I presume those were members of the dance studio.
They were, yeah.
You know, they did such a, a nice routine at the end of it, at the end of the lighting. I thought it was really, really cute, and I thought, why don't we have a parade or something, you know, after that?
Yeah, I don't know. Something to think about.
It was really, it was a nice idea.
Yeah. Glad I was there, too. All right, Village Manager's report.
Arlington report.
Okay, so need a motion to go into exec session to discuss pending or threatened litigation.
So moved.
Moved by Trusty Chris Meyer, seconded by Trusty O'Connor.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trusty O'Connor.
Aye.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Aye.
And Trusty Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Everybody stand by.
Can I ask a question, a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
The decision on the Brothers Field thing, the, the documentation for that, like the, the presentation, would, would there have been a place I could have found that to actually, I mean, I, I probably would have liked to make a comment early on on that. So the, were you, I know the, the, all the agenda points, the details are not being published anymore. And it's not required, I guess, but is there a place where I can find that?
On the Village website, under the agendas, there's the agenda packet that's there, and it has the, the draft ordinances that you can look at on there that have all the details here.
I tried that, I mean, I, I tried to look last week when this meeting was announced, and there was just the agenda.
Yeah, it was posted yesterday morning.
Okay, so, so all the details are being posted a day before?
Yeah, the board got it on Friday.
Well, good for the board, I guess. So I, I guess my point is, how, how do you expect the, the public to make any comments if they only get this information on a somewhat shortened notice? Maybe something to think about. I don't know. I mean, that's.
He's got a good point.
Well, so, but two things, right? So there, there was a public hearing, so that stuff was published then, right? But secondly, no, you are, we are now, the packets getting published on Monday for, for the residents. And it's only because it barely gets done for the board by Friday night late. And there could be some changes before it actually ends up in a, being able to publish publicly.
Okay. So.
And I guess we can try harder to see if we can get it up there sooner.
Right now, if we can get it up Friday.
Get it up sooner, get it up Friday, but it's just everything comes together at the last minute.
Yeah, but I, I guess if it's out there, that's fine, I guess, but I, I guess I should have checked yesterday. I guess, I don't, I don't think it's known that, because people were used to get this when the, when the agenda was published, and then it stopped. And now it's like, I kind of brushed it aside, and then I checked when, when I, at the point when I get, when I received the email with the agenda, checked online or on the website, didn't see anything, and I assumed that, well, I guess they only get published afterwards, after the meeting.
Well, so what we could do, what we could do, so again, when you publish the agenda to the public, just something else that could be done. If it's not ready to be posted, you could say, come back Monday, and the full agenda pack will be there, right? So that you would know when you looked at it, that it'll be there on Monday. We can tell you, we can do better, so.
That makes sense. I mean, if you get the agenda, then you go stand up.
So we can do better on that. I think work in progress, and I know it was done differently in the past. We're moving back in that direction, getting stuff published. And so if we can do that, then at least there'll be a notice. You'll know, check back on Monday, it'll be there or something, right?
And, and maybe as an, as an additional info on that is, I mean, I, I used to come to the, to the Village Hall to attend the meetings. And, and today it's pretty much just because I, I was curious what's going on with, with that topic with, with Brothers Field. I probably would have attended way more meetings if I had the details before. And maybe that's not just me. Maybe that's other people, too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's getting, again, we asked our Village Manager to start getting that stuff posted. It's, it's, we're moving back in that direction. It's there now. And sorry that you didn't know that it was going to be up there on Monday, so my apologies.
Well, I, I appreciate it. Okay, thanks a lot, and thanks for taking my question that late, so.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Good night and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, too. Thank you.
You need to tell him to go.
No, he's gone.
I said you need to tell him.
Ah, he's, oh.
I'll be damned.
Yeah, he's gone. He was, he was hanging up, so.
I will say, as a member of the public, just having the text of the ordinances would be highly unsatisfactory to me. If something like Brothers Field, a, a diagram would make sense.
It was in the, it was in it, right? You had the diagram and everything in there.
No, it was just the ordinances.
I'd say.
I looked this afternoon, so.
Staff reports we routinely have not put in there because they can, we.
Okay.
He was at both public hearings, by the way, for the, for Brothers Field.
Yeah, no, I would, I would put the whole kit, but, but something like a diagram or, you know, maybe, or maybe it's too much work to curate that, but it's.
That's kind of, it, it's an undertaking right now to get.
I understand that. For, for something like that, that a, a diagram would be huge. You don't need all of the traffic reports.
Thank you, Kanga.
Somebody does.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right, I'm going to move to open up the exec session here.
A diagram like the, the.
I mean, a diagram like the, the.
Okay, I want to start by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving again. And thank you, and I would like a motion to adjourn. By trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Reilly, all in favor?